Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 9th City Council meeting to order. Clerk Swope, would you please call the rule?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Jackson is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I think Councilman Jackson will be here shortly. And there he is. Okay. All right, at this time, we are to meditation and pledge of allegiance. Are there any councilmembers that would like someone to be remembered at this point in time? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that folks remember not only the friends and family of Dennis Rowman, but also our firefighter family here in the city of Lansing. It was nine years ago today that we lost Dennis as he was out near Johnny and Cedar essentially collecting donations for charity. And we lost him unfortunately. Somebody ran purposely into him. So huge devastating loss to the fire department, obviously to his family. He was also a veteran, which we appreciate his service on a myriad fronts. But in any event, please keep those folks in your thoughts personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any additional... Okay, Mayor Shore.
I'm just gonna add in that Wednesday is 9/11, so I'm sure we'll all keep every, all of our first responders and our thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Councilman. You reminded me about that, that we should talk about 9/11 as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Shore. Okay, at this time, we'll take a time for meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of August 12th.
Okay, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the proceedings up to that.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Are there any further discussion? See no further discussion? All those who favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We do have four tonight. The first one is the Eaton County Separate Tax Limitation Proposal.
Okay. Anybody from each county, please come on down. You guys are more welcome to come to the well. Make sure the green light's on. Thank you. And if you could just go over what this exactly is, and we'll open up for questions.
Good evening. First of all, my name is Joe Brailer. I'm a county commissioner. I know a great number of you, but there's a couple I don't. And we thought we would come by this evening and just advise you, over a period, a long period of time, Eaton County has suffered from a loss of revenue from a number of different sources. Headley has been a factor. The economic downturn in 2008, we had a very sluggish recovery. We have economic development zones in Eaton County that have deferred taxes, revenue away from us, some unfunded state mandates, and some other tax agreements. At any rate, what it amounts to is that within the next year, we will have about an $8 million shortfall on a $40 million budget. And so what we have done is, we've looked at our options. We put together a tax authority board, which recommended that we allocate the remaining three mills from the original allocation in 1978. In 1978, the counties had essentially available to them 18 mills. And they allocated a certain amount of that to go to the schools, the county, the townships. And Eaton County allocated 15 mills in total. The county's share of that was 5.5 mills. So that three mills is still available. So we have, we are required by law, since the Tax Authority Commission recommended it, to put it on the ballot. But we, the county Board of Commissioners, has supported it 15 to 0, that we asked the voters to allow us to allocate to the county that extra three mills. And so we would have an opportunity to, in effect, if we needed to, to assess a total of 8.5 mills per year. So we wanted to come by this evening. Gentlemen, to my right is the deputy controller, if you have some technical questions that he doesn't think I can answer. But we wanted to advise you, as you all know, I'm sure there are two Eaton County voting precincts in the city of Lansing. I have been very fortunate to represent them since 1988. So I'm here really on their behalf as well. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for being here and explaining that to us. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none.
Do you mind if I just share a little bit?
Absolutely.
Also, as a Lansing resident, three years, three, four, two, two North Cedar Street, so appreciate the work that you all do to keep the services going for our community. As staff, absolutely can't advocate for anything, but mostly just wanted to talk to the outcome. And it's not just us. A lot of communities are struggling with it. The Headley fatigue, as I like to call it, but since Headley and Prop A were put in, it's amounted to $24.5 million loss for the county since 1994. And that's shared by all municipalities. The other thing we've been working on is our pension obligation. So we still have an open DB plan. And part of this is managing those, because we all have that accelerated amortization schedule where we have to fully fund our pensions by 2038. Every year, we look at those pension obligations going up in terms of what has to come in. So comprehensive look of what we're trying to do is put the county on sustainable footing for the long term. For the residents that do reside in Eaton County or shop there, for anybody who loves going to Horrocks and drinking beer while you go shopping, that is a Delta Township stake mark, and that's part of what we provide services for. But we may have to have reduced hours, you know, so the courthouse only being open three days a week, which could impact people getting registered deeds, transactions put through. And also, we currently have a road patrol in our sheriff's department that provides a lot of law enforcement coverage, including backing up other municipalities. The East Lansing shooting, our deputies were on site to help with the university through that horrific event. So even though only about 1,500 people in Lansing proper may reside there, just want you to know what's going on. And if people have any questions, we're here. You can email us. Our website, we have a property tax calculator, so folks can go in and just enter their name, their address. It'll show you exactly what a full three mills would look like. And our goal is to get us in a stable place where we don't always have to levy that. But we're here, we're here right now, so.
Actually, Ben reminds me of something I was meaning to say. If we were able to access the revenue that we are losing because of the unfunded mandates, Headley and the others, I estimate that we were, we are losing per year somewhere between $7 and $10 million a year. If we were able to have accessed that money, we frankly wouldn't be taking up your time tonight. So I just, I think that's important, that people understand that for a variety of reasons over the years, the county has lost the ability to access some of the revenue that, in some circumstances, it should be coming to them.
So do you have an, do you know how many residential property owners are in those two precincts?
I think it's about 1,500.
About 1,500?
Yeah.
And do you know approximately what their taxes will go up per year?
Yeah, so on average, three-mill levy would be 218 a year, or 216 a year, $18 a month is what that would look like.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Do we have any further questions, comments from council? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Z1, 2024, 3724 Pleasant Grove Road rezoning.
Vice President Hussein.
Thank you. So I see Brent Wheeler, I believe Brent?
Yes.
Am I correct? Okay, with WM Investments is here. You want to come on through, just like the gentleman before you. Make sure that the green light is on. Essentially, what we have before us, folks, today is a, well, we're looking at setting a public hearing later on tonight. And the public hearing would be for the 30th. We do have a rezone request for the property at 3724 Pleasant Grove Road. And the rezone request would take that property from an R3 Suburban Residential to MFR, MFR Multi-Family Residential. So Brent is here to talk a little bit about the reason for the request, potential plans for that property should the request be approved by council. And certainly, he is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yeah, I've owned this property, I think, since 2017. It's just been a single-family rental since we bought it. I think we bought it directly from HUD. It was an abandoned vacant home at the time. We roughly put in $30,000 to $40,000 to rehab the house at that time, and it's just been a rental since then. But the tenant has since moved out. And when I took a step back to look at the surrounding area, it backs up to one multifamily unit. To the north side of it is the fire station, and then to the south side of it is the Lancy Border Water Light Power Station. So it's the only single-family house within that surrounding area of that street. And it's a large lot. It's almost a full acre. It goes back pretty deep. And when I contacted the city planning department and inquired about making this multifamily, and they had me send a request out to KEB to do a sketch drawing of what we could possibly fit within that parcel. They determined, based on the city ordinances, we could put potentially two separate five-unit dwellings. Originally, their request was to do a two-bedroom, but that was when we were gonna possibly build 14 units. But the space didn't make sense for that. So we decided to try for 10 units and make them three-bedroom units, two-story, three-bedroom units. I did submit an example of what that could possibly look like of the potential units. The other thing, in talking to a friend of mine who is in a startup of a solar panel company, because of these units, they will actually, the roofline may actually be facing south. And I've been in context with the Border Water Light, a possible building, solar panels on top of the roof. So we did build these units and make everything run off electric. They could actually be really energy-efficient units as well, just because of the way the homes face.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I see the picture, it looks really nice. It looks like four units here, or do you...
That was just an example, yeah. So we would just add another unit to that.
Okay. And have you been in front of the planning board already, and have they approved it?
Yeah, Andy, I think, spoke at the last meeting, and they were all in favor of it.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Just some of the same questions we asked the committee. So first, can you talk to this body a little bit about, are these, are these going rentals? Are they going to be condos? What do you, and I, and I get you're early in terms of planning at this point, but what are you looking at?
Could be either. Right now, we're just trying to see if it...
Could be a mix.
Yeah. We could literally easily just sell five units and keep the other five as rentals. I have a history of running short-term rentals within the city of Lansing. I own nine of them here, and they've all been foreclosures that we've had to rehab. And we'll probably continue to do that within the city of Lansing. So yeah, this area might be good for, I don't think, short-term rentals, because it's a little bit further away from East Lansing and downtown Lansing. But certainly midterm rentals, where we get a lot of requests for people coming in for one- to three-month stays. And they would be fully furnished units. We supply all the utilities, things like that.
You may have covered this. What, the unit types in terms of bedrooms, bath, what are we looking at?
For these units?
Yeah.
Probably a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath is what I think would make the most sense.
And would this be, I mean, I'm thinking, would this be market rate?
Yes.
And then, so I guess I'm a little confused. When you look at, you know, from, and I get what you're saying, the roofline will be, you know, potentially facing south. But when you look at, and you reference multifamily cooperative, which is behind that, right? So those folks there, including myself, have some measure of, I shouldn't say measure of, I mean, it's ownership. It's a unique form of ownership in that cooperative. But certainly, in that area, we're trying to bolster homeownership and the like. If you look at residential properties, I get that you have a mix in there. You have some commercial in there. You have some, you know, some church in there. You have a little bit of, I'm trying to think, a little bit further down, you have a mechanic shop. But when we talk about the residential, every door that faces Pleasant Grove is actually single-family housing. So yeah, I get that we can go back, you know, behind that neighborhood, and maybe further, and we can find multifamily somewhere in there. But that would, that would change the character of that road, correct? So I'm just, the other thing is, when we talk about that being, I would assume, three-bedrooms, we're looking at families. What is, so let me actually, let me fast-forward to this question. I'm a little concerned about the space that you have there. We have a similar, didn't need a rezone, but we have a similar development west homes. And this would be just south, I'm sorry, just east of the South Side Community Coalition. If somebody saw a fit to build 30 townhomes
Yeah.
With about three bedrooms apiece on that property, and what that has left, unfortunately, those families with, is zero space in terms of green space. There's no on-site amenity. It literally is townhomes and parking lot. And I, you know, when I look at this, I get you got a little bit of land in between the single-family home that's there now and the maintenance division. But it's not a lot, particularly when you're contemplating 25 parking spots on site. So what are we thinking about for that particular site in terms of green space, on-site amenity? I just don't, you know, where the kids gonna go?
You know, we, we haven't delved that far into it. I mean, the whole purpose of this was, does it make sense for us to build 10 more units inside the city of Lansing in, in an area of Lansing that really could probably use some new development? So that's, we're at the very early stages. Does it make sense to get this rezone to build more units? I think it does. City Planning Department thinks it does. I don't see why, any negative of why we shouldn't, so.
Just got a couple other questions. In terms of any rentals, it sounds like mostly you do like Airbnb.
Yeah, I've done long-term, but...
Who do you partner with in terms, because right now, physically, are not located in the state of Michigan?
No, I live in Nashville area, Nashville, Tennessee now. But I've grown up around here.
So what partners do you use in terms of management and...
I mean, for the short-term rentals, like, it's all self, I have a third-party management system, so we manage it mainly from my cellphone. But as far as cleaners, contractors, I mean, I lived in the city of Lansing, bought my first house here in 2009. I went to Michigan State, graduated from Danville High School. So I know enough people, I know enough electricians and plumbers and HVACs and handyman people to, anytime there's something in need, I can fix something. So I may not live here, but a majority of my income and a majority of my business, flipping-wise, I also own another LLC called Spartan Properties, where we do three or four flips inside the city of Lansing each and every year. So I may not live here, but 90% of my income is derived here.
Right, right. I don't have an issue with people that don't live in Lansing. My issue is, you know, is this, is this particular property going to get the care, is it gonna be attended to the way that folks that live there deserve it to be attended to, and the folks that live in the area?
Well, I would say it'd get the same care as all of my short-term, midterm rentals getting out. And there, I mean, if you go to CapitalCityVacay.com, you can view pictures of those houses, and they're gorgeous. Anyone who don't own Lebanon.
Appreciate that, Brent.
Okay, do we have any additional discussion from council? Seeing none. All right. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. Our next presentation is on the payment in lieu of taxes for Riverview 220 Apartments.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so actually, for the next two, we are looking later tonight to set a public hearing for both of these. That would be September 23rd. And we are going to bring Mr. Doug Fleming down, the Lansing Housing Commission. It looks like our Economic Development and Planning Director, Raleigh Van Fossen, will be joining him. And Doug, pretty much a repeat of what we did in committee, you all do have some materials, whether that be an outline packet or a physical packet in front of you. And so I believe that Doug is going to take us through the respective presentations.
Yes, if I can make this technology work. So I had to say that I got a visit from code compliance today. My auditors are in, and now I'm in front of city council. The only thing I'm missing to make a perfect day is a visit to the dentist. So it's my joke of the night, so. We have two projects, as Councilman Hussein said, in front of you. First of all, is Riverview 220. We'll talk about that, then we'll move to Grand Vista. They're strategically located to each other in downtown. And I'll go over through all of the information that you have before you to talk about each one of those. So I don't know if I moved on or not, but Riverview 220 is a 9% that we secured through MISHDA application a couple years ago as a part of the tax credit process. It's a $23 million development budget. There's a total of 63 new housing units that will be a part of that. This is also going to be the first mixed-juice building in the city of Lansing, where we will have market-rate units combined with affordable housing units and also some retail space. From a space standpoint, about where its location or location, we're going to share the block with the brand-new city hall. So I'm glad you guys are moving there, because now my retail space, my commercial space, hopefully will turn into a sub-shop or a coffee shop or something along that lines, where you can walk out the back door and, and our space can take care of whatever the needs are relative to city hall. Also, that's not a part of the presentation, LHC will also be investing $4 million of our own money into this project as a part of the development budget. Total, as I said, it's a $23 million development. It is tax credits. We are in the process of securing the tax credits through the syndicator right now. This will be our fifth deal in the city of Lansing. We've already invested over $65 million in the renovation of our existing properties. This will also be the first new housing built by the Lansing Housing Commission in terms of affordable housing in over 20 years. There's 52 two-bedroom units on the affordable side, four three-bedroom units. That was strategically done as well. One of the things that we see with our Housing Choice voucher program, and even with our project-based vouchers, is that we do have a need for more family-sized units in this city. That's not true statewide. I have a lot of my colleagues that work in other public housing agencies where they have a dire need for one bedroom. We do not have quite the need for one bedroom, although there still is a need for one bedroom in the city. But most of the people that come to us are small, medium families looking for larger units. So we strategically built this building to have more units, larger-sized units. There's also seven market-rate units, as I said before, two-bedroom, three, three-bedrooms, around 2,000 square feet of commercial space that we have yet to determine. I mean, the building's gonna be built, it's two years out, so we'll work on what we're gonna do with that space. And as a part of MISHDA, all MISHDA buildings have to meet some kind of green standard. In this one, we happen to be utilizing the NGBS green net. So basically, it's going to be all-electric. And we are also applying for a specific tax credit, another tax credit deal that also will maybe afford us some additional energy efficiency, where we may be able to add some solar and some other things here as well. It's a brand-new program through HUD. But legitimately, it's so new that they have not even determined all the rules and regulations relative to it. So we're still investigating whether that'll be available by the time that we begin. From a timing standpoint, this deal will close in November of this year. There is an existing Davenport building on there that's boarded up, in my humble opinion. It's a terrible eyesore to the city and a main thoroughfare as you enter the city from the east on Kalamazoo Avenue. Tearing that down and putting in something that's a lot more viable, bringing bodies downtown to spend money and spend time, is gonna be, I think, a significant benefit to the city. We're also right across the street from the bus station, which is also gonna be a big advantage to our residents who today, and our other four properties, have to get on a bus often, come downtown, jump on another bus to get wherever they want to go. These residents will be able to walk across the street, get on one bus, and in most cases, be able to go directly to where they want to go. So it's a significant convenience in terms of making our, the lives easier of our residents, in terms of them getting to services and other things that they want to get to. I think that's all I want to talk about on this project, so let's, we'll deal with this one. And if there's questions on this, then I can move to the other one. There is a pretty picture on there as well. And then the next slide after that, I do get into the numbers a little bit with the pilot. We do have a 10% pilot right now. Again, this project was submitted over two years ago. I think you all know the economics have changed dramatically in the last two years. These performers are very tight when you submit them with MISHDA. We are not allowed to change them. You have a budget, and you have to work within that budget. And the way the MISHDA performer works is that you have to factor into your budget for the first 20 years of the project, a 3% increase in expenses and a 2% increase in income. And the lines cannot cross in the first 20 years. So that means that you are under a lot of need to make sure that you really have your expenses in line with your revenues. And so it was, it's gonna make it very difficult under today's circumstances with the way the economics have changed. And, you know, not to pick on BWL, but the recent announcement by BWL, energy is a significant part of all of our budgets at our, at our buildings. And those increases over the next couple of years are gonna have a dramatic impact, impact on our ability to run this building and, and maintain the affordability. So you can see over the next 20 years with a 5% pilot, we're still gonna provide a net tax benefit to the city based on the current taxes that are on that property, about $468,000 over the next 20 years. And we did a little breakout on there to what's going on. This data is primarily based on the staff report that we got from the city on what the current taxes are on that particular property. So in both scenarios, assume about a 3% annual growth. So I will stop there and entertain questions on the first project.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, I appreciate that. That area you mentioned, you think that it's going up in value and all that with the development. But did you know that there's a lot of unhoused people that move through that area? And is the new building gonna do anything to help at all, or like hurt, or have you thought about that?
Yeah, we think about it every day, because our office is right across the street, and we see those people every day. The Housing Commission has not traditionally, Councilman, dealt with the homeless population. We deal with more stabilized housing. That's what our mission has always been. And, you know, we kind of stuck to that mission, will continue to stick with that mission. We do work with a variety of groups in trying to address that. But the biggest thing that we can do to help those people is to get them stable housing. And in the city of Lansing, that means more units. Because right now, when we open our Section 8 waitlist, we've been opening it about every 10 months or so, we get 3,500, 28 to 3,500 people apply for that list, that all say that they need affordable housing in the city. And we are consistently giving out vouchers to people that qualify. And they have 90 days in which to find housing in the city. And we have way too many of them. It's run somewhere between 6% and 8% that, and can get as high as 10%, that'll turn around and bring the voucher back to us, because they cannot find a unit that meets their family's needs. It's either the wrong size, they can't find the right price, it's not of a quality that they're willing to move their family into. So directly, are we going to take people off the street and put them, put them in these units? No. Indirectly, is it going to help the system? Yes, it will tremendously.
Do we have any additional comments or questions from council?
I've got a couple. So before this project came, before you came to council, I heard some rumors about potential CADA vouchers. Is that your property? Are they gonna be offering CADA vouchers for the people living there?
I have had conversations with Brad. We haven't talked lately. The CADA vouchers were really on the project that we were talking about building on Lot 1, that ultimately ended up being city hall. But we can pursue that with, with CADA as a, as one of the amenities. Again, the building's 24 to 26 months away from fruition, so we've got a long time between now and when we move people in. But it is something that we would pursue, Councilman, based on previous conversations with CADA.
Thank you. I'm looking at your, your diagram here, and with the stars, is that a parking lot? And the building you're talking about is just adjacent to it? I'm just curious about with the 63 unit, new housing units, is there gonna be appropriate parking for that?
Yeah, MISHDA requires, actually, for code, we are way in excess of what city code is for parking in the area. MISHDA requires one-to-one. And we have over one-to-one parking for the number of units and the number of parking spaces. You'll also see as a part of this, that's a kind of unique, and why it's kind of pushed up the lot there. There's a significant grade on that particular property. And that green space to the east is actually the corner of that property is in the 100-year floodplain. And under MISHDA rules, we're not allowed to build in that area. So we had to push it up the hill. And then we have special requirements that we're working with DEQ Lon and other environmental folks to make sure that that green space meets all the regulations as it relates to building anything in 100-year floodplains. So there will be no building in the floodplain. We can't even have parking lot in the floodplain. All of that has to be green space on the, on the east side of that building.
Okay. And two more, real quick. And two more real quick. When you talked about the energy, the recent increase in utility costs, will you guys be installing any solar panels on the roof of that building?
Yes, as I indicated earlier, I, no, I don't know that for a fact. So what we are doing is we're in the process of investigating some new HUD dollars through the, they're actually HUD dollars that will be administered to the Department of Energy that are specific for tax credit deals where you can get additional tax credit dollars, basically a one-to-one match. So if you put, you know, $100,000 of solar in there, you can get $100,000 in tax credits. So we are presently investigating that opportunity to be able to do that. But we're not sure because, not because we don't want to do it, it has more to do with that it's such a new program and new funding through HUD. And they've subbed that out to sub recipients across the country to administer those dollars. They're still developing their administrative dollars. I'm going to a conference in a couple of weeks and I'm hoping to get some more information about where we're at in that process and are they far enough down the road that between our timing, because we have to deliver these projects in a timeframe that meets Mishta's tax credit regulations, that we'll be able to get those in the same timeframe. So we're not positive of that yet, but we are pursuing that.
Okay, thank you. And then last, just a, just curious question. You know, 63 new units, you said 56 will be affordable. Where'd you get the magic number of seven for market rate?
This is complicated math, but Mishta has what's called a credit efficiency. And so in terms of the square footage of the building, you get X number of tax credits you have, that is divided into the amount of livable space that actually is going to be part of the tax credit process. And so you have to come up with that math, make sure that you maximize your credit efficiency, but you can't go over it. So once we maximize the credit efficiency, and you'll see that when most tax credit deals come out, they're in that 50 to 55 range, depending on the size of the units. That's why anytime you see a tax credit deal, most of them are in that size. They're in that size because of the Mishta tax credit program. When you get down to that credit efficiency, it works out to be about that size. And so 55 was the most number of units that we could do with the tax credits that we got. And then with the size of the building and the additional dollars that we had, we were able to add the seven market rate units.
Okay. And then I guess, just to expand on that a little bit, I know, I don't mean to belabor this, so we have another one to go through. But, and what happens when those seven different units, you know, when they find out that they're paying a lot more than everybody else? Does that end up, if you can't rent those out anymore? Have you ever had a problem like that with mixed use? Because I feel like, I've heard that in the past, like these people are getting upset they're paying, you know, twice as much as everybody else, and then they look elsewhere.
Well, as I've said for years, it's not about who lives in the building, it's about how the building's managed. And if we manage the building like a market rate building, which we manage all of our buildings that way, then it doesn't matter. And also, some of the other market rate units, those individuals could be paying almost market rent. Because remember, the subsidy is based on 30% of their income. If they're making a decent income, they could be paying, basically, market rent themselves and getting a mild subsidy of maybe $100 a month, maybe $50, maybe a couple hundred dollars, depending on each individual person's income. You all, when you move in with subsidy, everybody's situation is different because it's based on your income. So not everybody will be paying significantly difference. Will there be some people in the building paying a lot less than some? Yes. But will the market rate people be paying a lot more than everybody in the building? No, not necessarily. So these kind of buildings have been built all over the country. They've been built in this state. We've just never done it in Lansing. I've heard a lot of affordable housing developers say that it can't work. We are of a mindset that we think it can work and that we'll be able to rent those units to market rate folks. In all honesty, we do have a backstop, and that is that if we don't rent it out to a market rate person, we also have Section 8 vouchers, we could move a Section 8 person in there as well. So, because they would still qualify to move into there. But our intent is that they would be market rate units.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further questions for this one? All right, well, let's move on to the next one then.
Okay. On the other buildings, a little bit different because it is a 4% tax credit deal. This one, we worked with Mishta on, and it is in the old parking lot across the street from Lansing State Journal, of land that the Lansing Housing Commission purchased from the I Group. And this is a 55 new affordable housing units. The difference between obviously a 9 and a 4% tax credit deal is the amount of equity that you're going to get to build the building. That's also why we don't have market rate and why we don't have commercial space in this one, is because we don't have that additional equity. So we've kept this pretty much to a traditional, you know, market or affordable housing type complex. And there'll be 55 units, it's a little bit smaller development deal, and it's only $20 million of development. Again, LHC is going to be investing about $3.5 million of our own money in this project. There is 11 one-bedroom units in this one, 36 two-bedroom and eight three-bedroom. You again see that magic number, as I told you, it's going to be around the mid-50s because that's what works with a tax credit deal. And it also, while we're using a different green program, it is, also has a green program, and this is just a different variation, but fundamentally, it's going to be the same thing. It'll be primarily electric throughout the building because that's the new standard of energy efficiency. There's another picture of this building as well. And then from a tax impact on the city with the 5% Gran Vista, the net tax benefit to the city would be about $630,000 over the 20 years when compared to what the existing taxes are associated with this. So over the two projects over 20 years, it'll be about $1 million more of revenue to the city over the two projects. The primary data, and again, in both of these deals, I do need to emphasize that this does not include the tax revenues that comes into the city as a result of construction when we bring in third-party people to do unit turns, plumbers, electricians that are there to do work throughout the years, obviously, all those folks that are doing work in those buildings over the years. The employees that will be employed there, I mean, there's additional taxes on top of this, this is just pure real estate taxes. So they have a stepped-up economic advantage to the city over the years as well. I think the downtown would also think adding 125 new residents down there to walk down to Washington Avenue and buy pizza and eat at the restaurants and do the other things that we want them to do in downtown Lansing, go eventually to the elevation center and take advantage of some of the other wonderful things that are happening downtown that will have that, you know, a compounding effect of additional revenues to the city as well. Again, the primary data is from the staff report, and we again assumed a 3% increase here. So this deal, in addition, will close about the same time. It's probably going to be trailing by about a month in terms of construction and what we'll be doing there. But both of them, our anticipation is, is that we would be moving new residents into both of these buildings in late 2026 in that timeframe. Could be a little bit earlier than that, could be first quarter '27. So one of the challenges that we have as a housing agency and as an industry is that when we talk about housing needs and affordable housing, you know, while everybody wants to talk about today, we can never talk about today. Because we know how long it takes to do one of these deals. And right now, if I'm having a conversation with you about the next housing deal that the Lansing Housing Commission might be doing, we're talking about '27 or '28 already. So we're already three or four years behind of whatever we're at today. If we're going to catch up, we got a lot of work to do to catch up. So we need to keep thinking futuristically as it relates to the housing needs of the city and all the new jobs that we have coming in and the kind of housing that we may need in the city, so.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. Just a question about the surrounding neighborhood, Cherry Hill, and the integration, because I see this one has, is kind of like a block that has some housing all around it. So do you know how it'll affect the surrounding streets and houses and neighborhoods? And is there some type of barrier or is it just those people's backyards or that goes straight to the?
Yeah, those are all businesses, Councilmen. I mean, they look like houses, they're old houses that have been converted into businesses. I have communicated to the businesses in the area, the one school there is actually community mental health that we work with on a pretty regular basis. The Bankers Association is on the other side, I've had conversations with them as well. And we have talked to other folks in the neighborhood. The Cherry Hill people on the other side of Cherry Street, we have not gotten any direct feedback from having the housing there one way or the other, so. But the houses right there that you see in the picture are not really houses, they're old houses that have been converted into businesses. I think one's a lawyer's office and there's a dentist's office there, there's a couple of different businesses there.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess on the backside, it might still be houses. But either way, so how did those conversations go? You said you had conversations with some of the people?
Well, you know, most of them are concerned about the people that are hanging out there right now. That's where most of the conversations come from, and they worry that we're going to bring more of that downtown. And I tell them, no, this is quite the opposite. We're building housing so that we can take people off the steps at the Lansing State Journal Building in front of the bus station and who actually sleep behind my building and sleep on the Triangle Park next to us and get them off the street and get them into safe, stable housing. So there's a misnomer about, you know, that affordable housing brings that to the area. That's not what brings people to the area. What brings people to the area is a lack of this kind of housing. If we had more of this housing, then we wouldn't have those individuals that they're worried about. So most of the conversations revolve around the inaccurate stereotype that affordable housing brings some kind of bad element to the neighborhood when it's not factually correct at all.
But you said that earlier, that the people usually have to get Section 8 and there's a long waitlist. Does, will these have any Section 8 units?
No. Section 8 by definition means that the voucher goes with the individual. That individual can go live anyplace they want. These will be project-based vouchers, which means that when you move into Unit 1, for example, the subsidy is in Unit 1. When you move out of Unit 1, the subsidy stays with Unit 1 for the next family to move in. Under Section 8, I give you a Section 8 voucher, you can move into somebody's house if you don't like that house and you want to go somewhere, you take your voucher and you move to the next house and the subsidy goes with you. That's the fundamental difference between a project-based voucher and a Section 8 voucher.
Okay, so I was just making sure. So someone with a Section 8 voucher couldn't end up moving here for at least?
Not in this particular building because all 55 units in this one happened to be project-based. In the other building, because we have the second, seven market rate units that could happen over at that building because those units are kind of flexible, they could go either way, be market rate or be used for Section 8. So there's a little flexibility on 220, but there's not on Gran Vista because it is 100% subsidized. And that subsidy is coming from project-based vouchers that are being supplied by the Lansing Housing Commission.
Okay, do we have any additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, thanks for being here tonight.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Do we have any council members that would like to make comment at this time? All right, seeing none, it's all you.
First, I want to welcome, we have a new intern in my office that is working the council side of things, so please welcome Emma Favor in the back. So thank you, Emma. She'll be with us for the next several months. And then also, just the election is less than 60 days away. We have about 20,000, we have over 20,000 people who have already requested an absentee ballot. Those will be mailed out at the very end of September. So I think September 27th is the date that we are taking them to the post office, so look for them 28th, 29th, October 1st-ish in your mailbox if you have already requested one. There is still time to request one. I did, we did mail absentee ballot applications to voters who have not requested one, and there is still plenty of time to register to vote. So please make a plan on how you want to vote in this election. You can vote at home, you can vote early, or you can vote Election Day. And with that, we are to community event announcements. Members of the audience here have up to one minute to tell us the details of their upcoming community events.
What are scattered souls? Scattered souls are those who were moved from Oak Park Cemetery into Mount Hope Cemetery 150 years ago when Mount Hope opened. It is also the title of the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemetery's annual fall walking tour, this year to be held on the last Sunday in September, which is the 29th at 3:00 PM in Mount Hope Cemetery. So if you have any interest in cemeteries, in history, in the people who were moved from one to another and their life stories, come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
I'm Nick Lozani, president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association. I want to remind you that on Wednesday, September 11th at 6:30 PM, we will have our monthly meeting at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Suite G, that is the Village Lansing. We're still looking for a vice president, a treasurer, a secretary, and regular board members for the Kavanaugh and Kendon precincts, two for each precinct, of course, for regular board members.
Thank you. Other community events?
Good evening, my name is Jacquez West. I am the current Churchill Dowell Neighborhood Association President. As we move into fall, we want to address the concerns of our community, safety and policing. So we have invited key leaders to our next community meeting, including Ingham County Prosecutor John Dewane, Judge Cynthia Ward, Police Captain Eric Prattle, Dr. Paul Elam of MPHI, and our own councilwoman, Tamara Carter. Please join us September 17th at 6:30 PM at Alfreda Smith Community Center. This is our chance to come together, share our concerns, and find solutions as a united community. Looking forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none then, we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. So speakers will, are required to sign in to be called on. And items eligible will be items 7 through 20 on the printed, I'm sorry, items 7 through 24 on the printed agenda. And item 7 is the public hearing. So 7 through 24, that's the blue sheet in the back. We'll give you about another minute to sign in. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I have a great announcement to make. City of Lansing has been approved by the state government for a grant of $2,361,715 for our employees' retirement system. So that's great. We got a big chunk of change last year when the legislation passed, and I know a lot of us were part of that. The state opened up and said we can, we can give a little bit more. So I want to congratulate Desiree Kirkland and Dennis Parker and our grants team. That will go a long way, I believe. When we got the grant last time, that ended out saving us about $500,000 a year and cut the tail off of our unfunded pension liabilities. So that's really good news for the city. So I wanted to, I think this is the first announcement we're making of it. We haven't announced it publicly. I wanted council to know that first because we've worked very closely with you all on this and other things. So good news to start. I had written down the, you know, the 9th anniversary of Dennis Rodman. Thank you, Councilman, for raising that. I know that our firefighters will appreciate that. I had mentioned before, our September, September 11th is, we are having our annual ceremony at Wentworth Park, 8:30 AM, police officers, firefighters. We actually have a special guest. U.S. Department of Labor Secretary Julie Su will be with us in Lansing on September 11th on Wednesday morning and will be our keynote speaker. So it's wonderful to have her there along with our police officers and firefighters. Everybody is welcome. Anyone who's been there before knows that they ring the bell every time a plane hit a building or the field or the Pentagon. So it's very somber, but very important, we do that every year. This Saturday is our 35th Sister Cities anniversary. So that will be at 6:00 PM. 6 to 8 is the dinner and then 8:00 PM is the program. September 16th at noon here in City Hall is our Hispanic Heritage Celebration, so all are invited. September 18th at 2:00 PM, we will be announcing the next stages of the Ovation with some new design look and some marketing and how people can get involved. So that will be exciting, and that's at the Ovation site. And then September 21st, the Lansing Area AIDS Network has their AIDS walk from 10 to 1 at the Edgewood Church. So lots going on in Lansing, some good news, some things for us to remember, and I appreciate the time, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. As I indicated, it's Items 7 through 24. Item 7 is a public hearing repealing or replacing the existing sign ordinance in its entirety. Do you want to have an overview of that?
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, just real quickly, this is, this is actually the second public hearing on this. We had a public hearing in early July. It was sent back to Development and Planning Committee. And at that time, it was told us that some, some changes were being proposed. The, our city attorney's office did not think that the changes essentially met the legal threshold that would necessitate another public hearing. However, we thought it would be best practice to essentially send it back to the planning commission. It has went back to the planning commission. They have supported even with the changes. And we believed it was, again, prudent to, to have another set, sorry, public hearing. In any event, the changes is very quickly, there are four of them. One deals with licensing permits and fees. Basically, it states that all projecting signs extending over the public right of way, regardless of size or permit required, shall be licensed and placed on file with the Public Service Department. Dealing with general sign provisions, this actually regulates EMC signs, or electronic message centers, and prohibits any, sorry, any sign larger than 32 square feet outside of, or I should say, inside of any zone excluding the DT 3 zone. Also speaks to temporary signs in general, that they may not be internally illuminated. And then lastly, there is a number of, I shouldn't say a number of, but there are some changes that deal with freestanding signs, setbacks, heists of those signs, and the like. Because we, again, because this is the second public hearing, if we don't hear any substantive concern during the public hearing comment portion, we are going to try to move this through for approval tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
So I'm, I'm here to speak on Item 13, which is 2300 South Washington Avenue, purchase of property. This is around the same area where the old South Washington Office Complex used to be and before it was demolished because of that proposal that got passed, which I really regret voting for. I want to state this very clearly, where I sort of quote unquote stand on this. I don't know, since the property was technically, you know, part of the city because it was where SWAC used to be, I don't know why you would need to quote unquote, like, purchase it or anything. Second of all, the whole thing with tearing down SWAC, I need to remind you that several months ago, or at least a year ago, the city did, planned on tearing down SWAC without letting the city council know. And, and everyone was, and I, when I asked one of the council members, they were absolutely confused about it. And so the fact that they're building a new police station, when I don't know if they really needed to build a new property, it's just tearing down SWAC just to make way for it because you could still use the old building to make way for it. Just tearing it down was just way excessive. And so because of that, I just don't know if, again, it's that, it was that necessary to tear down SWAC and also to possibly purchase this address for such a purpose? Like, maybe it's for the whole police station thing, I don't know. But again, pretty sure it's something that is, that the city should have access to already. And I don't know why there should be any purchase of it. That's all I'm going to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, and then David Ellis.
Okay, well, Nick touched on my first topic, and it's one that I had raised last time. And I hope that by the time you get to the explanations, you have an answer for me. Why should the city spend $300,000 buying property it already owns? The city is the owner of this property. It seems to me that as the owner, they could simply do an interagency transfer, and it wouldn't require any kind of a purchase, especially not $300,000 worth. Second, the pilots for the two projects that we just heard about. You know, you know where I stand on pilots. This guy is talking like it's going to be a lot of money. Well, when you think about it, even if it's a million dollars between the two of them over 20 years, you're talking 50K a year. You're giving up a whole heck of a lot for 50K a year. And you have no guarantee that once this 20 years and the pilot is up, if everything else has succeeded as planned, he doesn't ask for Oprah's? Or is he going to be asking for Brownfields? And what about the businesses that is already helping to drive out? I noticed Berry Amis on the corner of Kalamazoo and River Street, or whatever street it was on there, is empty. It's gone. They shut up and left. All this new stuff going on around there has moved them right on out. And I don't, guess I blame them. When you think about it, you're talking about creating an island of buildings surrounded by homeless, by CADA, by mental health, by the city rescue mission. And the optics just don't add up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got David Ellis, and then Jody Washington.
Hi. Hi, David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I'm here to speak in support of Items 22 and 23. That's the LHC project. I live downtown. This is my, this is my neighborhood here. Looking through their numbers, and I'm kind of in a little bit of shock because I was like, oh, my gosh, I make less than 40% of the state AMI. This is, this is housing that I would not only be able to live in, but I would, like, I'm genuinely running the numbers on my phone right now saying, I can move here. This is, it's affordable housing. It's affordable housing for right downtown in an area that's in a giant upswing. We've got the City Hall moving down there. We've got the Music Hall that's moving over there. This is, why is there a question with this? It's low-income housing, so it's like, I understand, we know all of us like pilots. But it's low-income housing. It's the, the President of the United States, the Governor of the state have both said right now the housing crisis is caused by a lack of housing. Housing, 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 housing. This is housing. This is over 111 units of housing. It's 111 units of affordable housing plus the seven market rate. Yes, vote yes on this. It's a no-brainer. As for Item 21, the rezone on Pleasant Grove, this one struck a chord with me. There is not a character of a road. This is right next to any nor, look, I don't know, I don't know the guy who's doing it. I heard he's not from Lansing. I don't, I'm not here to support him specifically or defend him. It's, it's a big multi, I mean, it's not a big multifamily. It's a multifamily project right next to existing multifamily projects on a road within a half mile of three different parks and a school. Again, I, it's, why is this up to, why is this a question? It's, it fits in with the area. It provides housing to an area that already has amenities around. Like, if you want to talk, like, I'm sorry for sticking on this point of the character of the area. You want to talk about, like, the historic character of the area. If you look up at that Quality Dairy on the corner across the street from the Strip Mall, you'll see the back of that Quality Dairy has a weird angle on it. Why is that? This used to be a railroad for the New York Central Railroad that ran from Albion, Michigan up here. The historical character of this area used to be a rail line. Historically, characters of areas change with time. But that's not even relevant here because these, if you, after this meeting, take a drive. Oh, I have to walk down to the construction. Walk down to MLK and around Genesee. There's some beautiful townhomes being built right next to a big string of single-family houses. And tell me those don't fit with the character of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, followed by Bill Black.
Thank you. I wasn't really going to speak until I heard Doug Fleming. I swear to God, for somebody that's, if the devil wasn't real bright, this man could sell matches to the devil. He says that he's going to run these properties like he runs the properties he already has. That should scare you. Ryan Kost and myself, we both went through several of the units that the LHC managed. And somebody should be behind bars for making people live in those conditions. And if I hear one more time that Lansing needs more affordable housing, I think my head's going to pop off. It's the region people that needs more affordable housing. But because everybody else chooses exclusionary zoning, we get stuck with all of it. And I don't want to hear anymore. If we don't take it, who will? That's the big question. Find out. Quit taking it. And you are creating a ghetto if you pass this. You are creating warehouses of poverty that we have created in this city over and over and over. And having grown, raised my children in a warehouse of poverty, it does no good for anybody. They were lucky to get out. So these pilots, they've got to go. Doug Fleming, we shouldn't trust him with tinker toys, for God's sakes. I have been in those houses. I've been at meetings that he has held for the upper echelon where he locked out the residents. He is insulted. He doesn't run a good business. And as far as, oh, we see the homeless every day. That place is locked down like, like a prison. I'd go with my people there. You can't get in. And when they do get in, they're treated poorly. So if you think it's okay to have bedbugs, roaches, black mold all up the door, all up the walls, well, then by all means, keep letting the LHC take over our city. I am horrified that this man even has the nerve to come before you. Particularly with Ryan sitting here. This is a no-brainer. Vote no. You have the CADA bus station. I'm there all the time, but I'll bet you're not because most people will not go in there. You have the mission that's expanding. The outreach is going to be there. Hundreds and some units of low-income housing. It's not the David Ellis's people. That's not who's living in these places. You know, that's a pipe dream, but he will not live there. And I wouldn't let my mother live there. And as far as the last one y'all did, the senior housing up on Larch, I was there last night with a couple of my people. They were pissing right on their lawn. So use some vision. Our city lacks vision. Start having some vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill Black, and then Amy Rockland.
Could you pass this out, please? Mr. President, members of the city council and mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and to talk to you about what we believe is a very crucial issue for this city. My colleagues from Over 243 in the back, President Quinneville and myself, we thank you for the work that you do in Lansing every day. We have property here in Lansing. We have thousands of members here in Lansing. And also, we have the city workers that we represent here in Lansing as well, too. So we're very committed and we're very engaged in Lansing. We're here today to talk to you about Neogen. And I want to bring up a few facts about Neogen. First of all, you know, turning to the document that I just passed out to you, because you might be asking, why are we talking about a labor issue here at city council? This is the first C-Max decision issued by the National Labor Relations Board under the Biden-Harris team. And a C-Max decision is a decision that is ordered when they break so many labor laws that they enforce a bargaining order. Neogen, last time through their attorney that was here, I believe, if we transcribed it right, Ms. Rockland said, "This is a normal procedure for the NLRB." I'm here to tell you, this is everything but a normal procedure for the NLRB. Is, that is absolutely a false lie. We're used to employers lying to us, but lying to city council is totally different. I'd call your attention to the document. This is a complaint and a notice of hearing for October from the National Labor Relations Board, the federal government. If you turn to page 3, Item A, this is how deep this goes. But, and this is, this is not the Teamsters investigating this. This is the National Labor Relations Board, a federal government. John Aiden threatened employees with the closure of this facility if they selected the charging party as their collective bargaining representative. So they're here asking for money, but in the same breath, they're threatening to close and move. I'd call your attention to page 5. And I believe Ms. Rockland brought this up last time, only here is the truth what the federal government is saying. "The serious and substantial unfair labor practices conducted and described above in paragraphs 5 through 11 is such that there is only a slight possibility of traditional remedies erasing the effects and conducting a fair rerun election. Therefore, in the balance, the employees' sentiments regarding representation have been expressed through authorization cards and would be better protected by assurances of a bargaining order." This is the first one in the state of Michigan. We have the Secretary of Labor coming here, and congratulations on that. That is huge. We want to see Lansing grow. We're committed to here, but we want to see the right employees that treat their employees the right way. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Rockland, and then Keith Waszelski.
I can't pronounce his name either, and I work with him. So thank you so much for, for giving me the opportunity to address the council again. You know, I'd like to address a couple of points that, that Mr. Black just made. First of all, the comments he's making are taken out of context. This is a complaint granting a hearing. The C-Max decision is new, and therefore, it's relatively untested. And the reason why, if in fact, I actually don't even know, if in fact, this is the first C-Max hearing granted under, under the C-Max ruling, it's because the ruling is incredibly new. So the, the points that are being made are, again, are, are, are the statements of the NLRB that they are looking to examine. Again, there, we have, the NLRB has granted a hearing. It's frankly no more, no less than that. It's not, it is not a, a statement or regarding Neogen's, any wrongdoing on Neogen's part. It is a hearing to examine whether or not the allegations are correct. And we do intend, of course, to participate zealously in, in our representation on that because we've done nothing wrong in that regard. As Mr. Black also correctly points out, the union drive matter between Neogen and the Teamsters is being sorted in the appropriate forum, the NLRB. This is a completely unrelated matter. The plan benefits the city and Neogen. It encourages Neogen to continue investing in Lansing and growing the city. It remediates and redevelops old contaminated and urban industrial sites that without frankly these tax credits, people wouldn't remediate. And it stabilizes a nearby neighborhood and provides jobs for Lansing and Michigan residents. And then, as I mentioned the last time, and I think is, Mr. Waszelski will also point out, this construction project is entirely 100% union. So it's, it's not an issue of Neogen not supporting unions. There was a, a, there was a union drive. Neogen employees voted against representation by the Teamsters, and this is the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Keith Waszelski, followed by Michael Mercer.
All right, as stated, my name is Keith Waszelski. I'm Senior Tax Accountant for Neogen. I'm here to talk about Item 12 on the agenda for the amendment of the Brownfield Plan, Number 81. Council President Garza, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you and the council representatives today. Our manufacturing facility there on 720 East Chiawasi is the new foundation for Neogen manufacturing in the city of Lansing. Neogen continues to believe in Lansing through the renovation and upgrading of underused properties. By the end of the proposed amended project plan, Neogen will remove around 55,000 cubic yards of soil that's contaminated with coal and petroleum contamination, which existed on that property before we even purchased it. To put this into perspective of how much soil this is, it will cover 11 acres of land at a depth of 3 feet. To move this soil, it took 1,375 truckloads to cart that off to be properly disposed of. Continuing the site remediation also includes a vapor mitigation system that will run 24/7, nonstop, underneath the ground at our Neogen, at our Neogen manufacturing facility. nonstop underneath the ground at our Neogen, at our Neogen manufacturing facility at our expense. Other improvements to the property are updated sidewalks, green spaces, demolition of vacant and tired buildings, upgrades of storm and sewer lines, and the installation of 20 over 20 54-inch cisterns to aid in the city's drainage system. We have employed local contractors whenever possible, and as Ms., as Amy said, we are proud to, to say that the trades who had worked or are working on the project are all located within Michigan and 100% union. On the potential 115 new jobs we expect to hire in this project, only, or around 80 of them will only require a high school diploma or a GED. The remaining 35 will require apprenticeships or two- to four-year degrees. These are good local jobs for the city and Lansing and Michigan residents. Production employees will gain valuable knowledge and advanced manufacturing techniques, have the opportunity to advance within the company. And also, these skills are portable, so they can take them with whatever company they want to go to. This project is, is an example of why Michigan Public Act 31 of 1996 was passed, to allow companies like Neogen not only to create good jobs for the local, for the local talent, but to continue the steward of Lansing and its environment. This project would not have happened if it wasn't for the Brownfield planning allowed under Act 31. We at Neogen thank you for your time and continued commitment to this great city of Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for this portion is Michael Mercer.
I'm at the city mayor's.
Okay. I will pretend this is yellow. And that was it, and we are to the referral of public hearings. We have item seven, the sign ordinance.
Place on file.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
Before I turn this over to Vice President Hussein, are there any items from the consent agenda that you would like to be moved? All right. Councilman Jackson.
12.
12?
And 13.
Any other items, any other council members would like to be removed from the consent at this time? All right, seeing none. Vice President Hussein.
All right. So that leaves, leaves us, sorry, with a balance of eight through 11. We have grant acceptance, Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity firefighter turnout gear grant. We also have a grant acceptance for Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund. We have a resolutions, a resolution of grant acceptance, sorry. This is from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Community Energy Management Grant. We have Development and Tax Increment Finance Plan. Again, this is a resolution for the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority. With that being said, I move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any further discussion on the consent? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. Item 12, Brownfield Plan number 81.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, just a quick synopsis. We did approve Plan 81 back in 2022. This would be amendment number one to that plan. It was explained to us several times over that since the approval of Brownfield Plan number 81, the project has, has increased its scope and size from about $71.5 million in projected investment to $169.8 million. Brownfield cost rose just a bit from $5 million to about $6.2 million. And then in addition, there's this Phase Two that's been talked about at length that's ready to commence. That will include $38.2 million of additional private investment and reimbursable eligible Brownfield activities amount, I think it was $2.4 million. In total, as referenced earlier, 115 new jobs would be added as a result of these investments. It was also discussed that we have some 28 trades working in terms of the construction projects right now. All union prevailing wage agreements are in place. General contractors are Lansing-based. Let's see. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we do have a motion in place. First, I'd like to make a, a brief comment regarding, regarding this Neogen project. I heard from both sides, I hear there's some allegations that are taking place regarding the employees. I would encourage Neogen, if those are true, to take a hard look in the mirror and realize that it's very important for workers to be able to form a union, to collectively bargain. Obviously, I can't use my decision on where I'm voting today because of that. I will be supporting this project. This is an expansion of a already existing brownfield. But I hope you take a good look and, and make sure that your employees that you are hiring are taken care of and they're working with safe working conditions and have a fair contract after, after this is all said and done. Thank you. Do we have any additional comments or questions for council? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I just wanted to take it off the consent agenda because there's been a lot of, I guess, you know, we've, we have, we literally have a federal filing hearing date. So, you know, I think we can consider whatever we want, and, you know, the hearing is next month. And, you know, what would it be if we approved and supported and then we just didn't wait and find out and have there be some violation of a, of a law? And then we'll just have looked back and said, we never would have known. So I'd like to see the process get played out. So for all different reasons, I won't support it this time.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I too wanted to say a few words about this. I think that the labor relations charge is very serious, one and one that has a, a process and a remedy that is being sought through the National Labor Relations Board, and the brownfield is something that we have before us to consider. I did have discussions today with the administration about the impacts of this, and I was reminded that all brownfields require compliance with state, local, and federal law. And if something comes up that Neogen did in fact commit what was charged in this, this ruling, they would have to be in compliant with, compliance with federal law before the brownfield could continue in this case. So I, I have no problem supporting the brownfield this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Spatafor. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Number four, I'm sorry, 13, Act 4, 2024. This pertains to purchase of property at 2300 South Washington Avenue. Essentially, what we are looking to do is to purchase 2300 South Washington, sorry, from the Lansing Building Authority. The city attorney's office did explain to us in committee that that is a separate entity from the city of Lansing, and they did in fact purchase the, this property from McLaren for the amount that they are, that we are now looking to convey to them. This, of course, deals with our public safety complex, so I don't know if there's anything additional folks want to know, both in regards to the Lansing Building Authority and the way it's set up under state statute. I would defer those questions to our city attorney. And with that, I would move the act.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. And place, do we have any additional comments from council? Councilman Cost.
Yeah, just a quick question for the city attorney. Why are we seeing this purchase agreement now with this property?
Because the resolution to purchase it by the city from the LBA is coming now. I mean, it was purchased by the LBA, I want to say in 20, early '23, or possibly the end of '22, shortly after the millage passed. McLaren approached and the LBA purchased it at the time. And I think originally, the intent, at least my understanding, was that the intent was that it could be built entirely on that parcel. And then once the determination was made that they need more space and they were expanding over to SWAC, we have a, we have a situation where we've got two parcels that are separate, that are owned by two separate entities, and they're going to be combined into a single parcel with a single building crossing both of them. So I don't know if that answers the question, but that's, that's how this is coming now.
I was just curious on the timing, because, you know, like you said, this was approved by voters in '22, November of '22, and we're just getting this now almost, what, September '24? So the timing just didn't add up.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you have a specific further question. I, at the time, LBA was able to purchase it very quickly from McLaren. And again, I think that there was an intent to possibly use just that parcel, in which case it would never have to come back to the city. But we're, this is where we are now, that they are building across both boundaries.
All right, thanks.
Okay, do we have any additional discussion? All right, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to the appointment of Charles Randall as the internal auditor.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, thanks so much. So first of all, we do actually have Charles Randall with us, and we certainly appreciate him being here with us this, I was excited to be able to present on this. We actually posted for internal auditor early in the year, you know that, been working with office staff. We've also been working with human resources to, to vet candidates. We had a number of qualified candidates. We had a number of folks test. We were able to bring in Mr. Charles Randall, two personnel to actually interview. Test scores were off the charts. The interview was stellar. In all of our opinions, we actually did have human resources then engage in background checks and professional checks and things of that nature. Everything came out great. So we were very excited that somebody of his caliber wanted to work here with the city council in what is an incredibly important position. What I am going to do very quickly before I, I proceed is we have a substitute. So if you want to look very quickly, should be in front of each of you at the dais. The only difference with regard to this particular substitute, and then I'll move for its adoption, is the third whereas. If you look in the third whereas, we did not have any, anything that dealt with council fringe benefits in the resolution. And it does say that council may grant up to 15 days of vacation leave for a one, I'm sorry, for one year, available for use immediately at point of hire. And we just, we basically, we had a request. Mr. Randall had some, some things that had been pre-planned, and he might need a little bit of that time, kind of front-loaded, and we didn't see in committee a problem with that. So we are reflected in this resolution, looking to grant that, that request. But again, excellent, excellent candidate. We are actually going to, I should say, being, actually was proposed by, I think, Councilman Spatafor and honored by Mr. Garza, we're looking at re-establishing an ad hoc committee in terms of, I think we did this a few years back, but ad hoc committee on internal audit, and Mr. Garza will speak to that momentarily. But with that, I would move the appointment of Charles Randall as the internal auditor.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do, okay, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I was also in the screening committee, did a great job and all the things. You were the only candidate, but you were also the best candidate, so, than that. And I did advocate, and I'll just say it, I did advocate for you to have a hybrid work here and remotely, because I would not want to see you locked up there eight to five and just have to be there all day and then just think about your, you know, significant other people and then leave us when we, when we need you for our job because you qualified. And there wasn't a lot of people. But no, you were really good and you qualified. So, you know, for the future, I know that's a leadership thing, but I feel like, you know, for that position, we would be emailing a lot of times and you would be here half the other time, so we should think about that, just to save our people.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we, we actually did have several interested candidates. We, we pulled in several folks to test, several folks passed the testing. Frankly, Charles Randall, I mean, his, his scores were far higher, right, than anybody else's, and he was the only person we actually brought forth for an interview. I'll say it.
Thank you. Councilman Spatafor.
I'm really glad to have this position filled out, I'm very much looking forward to it. We're 84 minutes into the meeting. Are you sure, before we vote on this, that you're still in? Okay.
All right. Okay, do we have any additional comments? All right, seeing none, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Yeah, you, you want to come down, get sworn in now, please? All right. Yeah, you bring your, whoever's with you, more than welcome to be down here with them.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Internal Auditor.
Of the Office of Internal Auditor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're a science student.
All right, at this time, I have to hand the gavel over to my vice president. All right, Councilman Garza. Okay, so this is a resolution action item 15, establish an ad hoc committee on audit. So the city council will be creating an ad hoc committee, which will be established to provide guidance, oversight to the city council, internal auditor in the performance of his or her responsibilities, create and review annual, annual audit plans, evaluate the financial position of the city. The, the ad hoc committee will consist of Councilman Peter Spatafor as chair of the ad hoc audit committee, council member Tamarra Carter as vice chair, and council member Trini Pallavani-Glu as a member. The ad hoc audit committee will meet on the days and times set by the chair and will dissolve by September 1st, 2025. And with that, I would move the resolution. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none. Councilman Jackson.
I mean, I guess it is kind of self-explanatory, internal audit, but like, what, just a little background, just because I, you know, I'm just hearing about it. Just curious.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. A great question. So when we had Eric Brewer on board at one time, we had discussed doing an audit committee. We brought that together to recommend which departments were probably most ideal to audit every year, which ones were probably every other year, which ones required a quarterly, which cash accounts probably should be audited on a more regular basis. And to set a schedule out so that there was some expectation that those were done on a certain timeline, and also to give the folks in the department sort of time to prepare for an audit. It's not as if you're catching folks off guard, but it's you want to make sure that they have the time to prepare the necessary documents to do a thorough and complete audit of the department. They're, they're complicated animals. So we, we put that together, I believe, the year we walked into the COVID-19 pandemic, and then that just became sort of not sort of a timely issue that we were dealing with anymore. That fell by the wayside, and we lost our internal auditor. We brought a new one in. That one has since left. And when we were meeting with, his name's escaped, Mr. Charles, Mr. Randall, this last time, we really thought this would be a good, good, good opportunity to bring that in. I know he'll have a lot to share and thoughts on ways we could do that again. We've dug up the files from Mr. Brewer to see what he had identified as opportunities to look at first, what, what made sense further down the road, and to pick up that work. So it's really just to kind of help guide the work of the internal auditor in a systematic way with a committee to report to and a committee to report out to on a regular basis, in addition to his day-to-day tasks.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that is why the president has decided you're going to chair that committee.
All right. Seeing no other questions, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Carries? Mr. Garza? Okay. Clerk Swob.
We are to item 16, the amending the claims policy.
All right, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. We have a resolution to amend the claims policy to basically include a licensed attorney as the representative from the city attorney's office. Currently, it basically reads a representative from the city's attorney's office. And because the claim review process has some legal elements and some serious things like with notice and process and due process and all that, we felt and feel that it's a good idea to have a licensed attorney as the city attorney's office representative. So that's the main change. The other two representatives, there's three people total, is a member from the administration and someone from city council, which is our internal auditor, and makes up three panels for the claims review. And that's it. I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, item seventeen, Claim Appeal twenty-sixty-six.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, this is a claim appeal that came through the claims review process, which just got amended, but it came through the claims review process where Mr. Mann at eleven-twenty-three Hatman Street came and is appealing his charge of having his, piece of his indoor recliner taken away. The hauler took it away and charged $300, which is the lowest a haul could be, there it is, it's the bottom half, and then there's a $265 administration fee, giving a total of $565 to haul it away. He argued that he had two other bulk items out that he had a proper tag for, he paid $35 for each tag, and those were on the curb, and they got taken away. Why would the city charge him that much to come around to the side of his house and take out that one piece that he forgot to put a tag on? And we talked about that, and ultimately decided to affirm the claims review process and keep the fee which we all agree is high, I probably should have voted no, because it is high, but that is the lowest plus the administration fee to make that amount, and we have that to vote on.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, item eighteen, Claim twenty-sixty-one.
Councilman Jackson.
Another claim review for three-thirty North Walnut, and on the same building, three-twenty-nine West Chiawassee, it's on the corner, basically, there was a bulk item tag that was purchased and put on the corner of one of those addresses, but the people who were to come by came by the other address and said it wasn't there, and basically left it, and that ultimately ended up him getting the same $565 fee of, you know, the administrative and the minimum haul. We decided that since there was notice sent to the wrong address, and he did put it out there, and it was the same property, and it looked like on a mistake, and then there was even an email from public service people that said, oops, he had the wrong address or something, sorry about that, so we granted his appeal, and now he does not have to pay $565, unless we change the vote, so that's what we're voting on today.
Okay, we have a motion in place. So to be clear, if we vote yes, we are grant, granting that he does not get charged.
That is correct, because we are affirming.
The denial of the fee.
Yes, right, right, city attorney?
That's correct, the wording of the resolution is to grant the appeal, which would be to waive the charge.
Perfect, okay. Okay, we have a proper motion in place, is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, item nineteen, Claim twenty-forty-two.
Uh, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, the last one here, at seventeen-oh-five North MLK, there was a property that was initially had some fire damage that was being worked on the inside, however, there was a notice sent to that property that said you have stuff on the outside, mainly tires, you can see there. The claim review denied his appeal for $2,375 of 28 tires worth, and maybe a couple of other things arguably, but the tires are expensive, because they're each, I don't know if it was 25 or 50, but they add up, plus the other, how many hauls it took. But he came and he says adamantly that he only had three tires, and that those other tires were on the adjacent property, how it's pushed against, you know, this, the common property line, and that he only has three, three tires that were in a good place. So he was appealing that amount. We discussed his claim, and one of the things he was appealing is that the notice was sent to the condemned property that he is, I guess no one's allowed to live in, so I was concerned that, why would we send a notice to a place that we know they can't live in, and then expect them to have notice, and then basically the story, or the reason is because it's the official assessor's address, it's the only address, and it's proper notice as far as everybody's concerned, at least that's what I think our assistant city attorney said. So it passed two to one, and that's what we have to vote on today, whether to grant his appeal or not of that amount. So I don't know what yes and no means, but that's what it's for.
So yes would be to side with the city attorney, correct? To deny the appeal?
Not to side with the city attorney, but yes, to deny the appeal.
Okay. All right, we have a proper motion in place, any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, six-two.
Okay, we have item twenty, grant acceptance for the agriculture forestry grant.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, first, I'd like to thank our sustainability manager, Lori Wells, as well as our chief financial officer, Mr. Jake Brower, who, they both were with us, sorry, direct committee of the whole to explain this. Essentially, we are looking at the acceptance of a five-million-dollar grant, this would fund a five-year project, included within would be 2,000 trees planted in disadvantaged areas of the city, planning, there were some questions in terms of who would do the planning, and what would this do in terms of capacity within forestry as, as it exists today, was discussed, that it would be contracted out due to some of those capacity issues. Community engagement, workforce development, and educational pathways, holistic management of existing canopy, and demonstration of the use of urban waste in a nail laminated, laminated, sorry, timber project in Lansing, all included within, there were some partnerships discussed potentially with Lansing Board of Water and Light, the school district, and I think MSU's urban planning and design college was discussed. There were some questions regarding stump grinding, of course, anytime we talk about trees, we talk about stump grinding, Lori did discuss the fact that they are, they continue to look for funding opportunities, but that this would not be ineligible, or I should say, that would not be on an eligible expense with this particular grant. Also, there were some questions about whether this was reimbursement-based, was this advanced payment-based, we did get some information from Jake Brower that this is actually both, so this can be advanced payment or reimbursement-based. So with that, I would move acceptance of the grant.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to introduction of ordinances, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-six point zero-two of the Code of Ordinances, property located at Z1 twenty-twenty-four thirty-seven twenty-four Pleasant Grove Road, rezoning from R3 Suburban Residential to MFR multifamily residential, it's read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I won't speak at length, we did have Brett Wheeler in from WM Investments LLC, who owns this property at this time, has actually applied for the rezone, his, his idea with regard to this particular property is to create ten row homes situated over, basically, they would be two sets of five contiguous row homes. Multifamily, I think he referenced three bedrooms, potentially up to two baths, he did reference the fact that this would be market rate, not a, not a fully baked plan, he acknowledged that at this point, but he was looking at the highest density, the highest density that he could position on that particular property. I did reference character, Mr. Ellis, I talked about that at the podium earlier, maybe I didn't state that as artfully as I hoped. In these matters, what I meant was that the master plan matters, and surrounding zoning matters. And so very quickly, with regard to the master plan, the design master plan does designate this for low, the low-density residential development, and then in terms of surrounding zoning, you have to the north, R3 Suburban Residential, to the south, you have R3 Suburban Residential, to the west, you have R3 Suburban detached residential, and then to the east, you have the multifamily residential, which is the neighborhood that was referenced multiple times tonight, and again, this is immediately to the, to the, actually to the west of this property, so there might be some mistake there. But in any event, in terms of the report, in any event, those were kind of what my comments were referencing. So with that, again, what we're looking at doing is setting a public hearing, and this would be for noticing issues, let me see, September thirtieth, so I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, any further discussion? I see none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, item twenty-two, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight-eight-eight for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for 56 low-income dwelling units in a project known as River View Two Twenty Apartments pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six, being Public Act three forty-six of nineteen sixty-six as amended, MCL one-two-five-point-fourteen-oh-one at sec, the act. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so this would be a Lansing Housing Commission Development, so we did have Executive Director Doug Fleming in earlier to explain this, he talked about the fact that they had secured a nine percent low-income housing tax credit through MISTAA, in total, this would be a $23 million development, they're looking at constructing 63 units of housing, however, that would be mixed rental types with seven market-rate homes, so the pilot would only apply when applied to the commercial or to the seven market-rated, it would only apply to the 56 low-income units being contemplated here. The pilot being requested is five percent for 40 years, they do have, they actually secured a 10% a few years back, they couldn't afford with that 10%, but construction costs and things of that nature have, have risen, which is necessitating, at least according to them, an ask for a 5% pilot. So with that, I would move to set the public hearing, and that would be September twenty-third.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, do we have any additional comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, item twenty-three, we have. Item twenty-three, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight-eight-eight for purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for 55 low-income dwelling units in a project known as Grand Vista Place pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six, being Public Act three forty-six of nineteen sixty-six as amended, MCL one-twenty-five-point-fourteen-oh-one at sec, the act, the ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Okay, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we have the same applicant, again, Mr. Fleming explained this in great detail, so just very quickly, what they are proposing is 55 units of low-income family housing, this would be at the 500 block of South Grand Avenue, they again have a 10%, they're seeking a 5% for the same issues referenced earlier. Yeah, and the public hearing would be the twenty-third, so the same date as the, the other public hearing. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage, item twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to repeal and replace the existing signs ordinance being part fourteen, title four of the Lansing codified ordinances is in its entirety with part thirteen, title two, regulating the size, location, and character of signs and sign structures on property in Lansing, is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so as part of the public hearing, explained this in great detail, also said that if we did not get any substantive, substantives, sorry, concern at the podium, that we would move for final consideration, we did not hear anything, frankly, I don't think anybody spoke to this throughout the process, very quickly, want to thank Economic Development and Planning, particularly Director Riley Van Fossen, I know they wanted this to move through the process, it's a little bit quicker, but when I told them that I had some concerns about the planning commission not vetting any additional changes after the public hearing, they welcomed that, we worked on the timeline, that was, basically, what we were trying to do was, was make sure that we buttoned this up before the next construction season. So with that being said, I would move the ordinance for passage.
Okay, we do have a proper motion in place, this will be a roll call vote, is there any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none, Clerk Sulp, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pallavaglou.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Uh, would that be immediate? I would have moved for, I'm sorry, I would move for immediate. No, because that's zoning, you can't, sorry.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, and that is the yellow sheet in the back, if you have not had an opportunity to sign in, go ahead and get up with Emma in the next minute or so, and in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move that, all items be considered as read in full, and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have, from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Items from the mayor, grant acceptance, agriculture forestry grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
The appointment of Julie Vandenboem as a member of the capillary district library board.
City Operations.
Appointment of Jonathan, Jonathan Smith to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board.
Refer back to the administration for a correction.
We have two items relative to amending part twelve, title six, form-based zoning code, second amendment.
Development and Planning.
Two items relative to amending part twelve, title six, chapter twelve fifty, accessory dwelling units.
Development and Planning.
And two items relative to amending chapter twelve thirty-six, design standards for parcel dimensions.
Development and Planning.
And we have an item from the Historic District Commission, a communication requesting a historic district study committee of the former, for the former Eastern High School.
Ways and Means Committee.
Communications, we have Claim Appeal for Claim two-zero-five-nine-I Plan Group for seventeen-hundred-sixty-two and red tag fees.
City Operations.
We have an affidavit of disclosure for, from Justin Moore, Lansing Police Department.
Place on file.
And a communication from Lansing Area Economic Partnership opposing the creation of a historic district at the former Eastern High School.
Ways and Means.
And communication from Mitch Rice about payments in lieu of taxes.
Place on file.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks, Councilman Spatafor.
Sorry to make the meeting a little longer, but I did want to, according to my Rolodex, Councilmember Adam Hussein has a birthday tomorrow, so I want to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday tomorrow. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, I didn't want to make the meeting any longer, but there is something that is really bothering me and a lot of people, and it is a board water and light rate increase, nine percent this year and nine percent the next year, and do you know what they are saying the reason is for? That we have to pay for clean renewable energy, and do you know what that clean renewable energy is? A new dirty gas plant. Can you believe it? And they're, they're making us pay for it, they're like, they're like, hey, we're going to bond all this money because we're going to do these clean energy projects, and everybody's like, yeah, 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 clean energy, but then they're like, all right, here's the plan, and it says clean energy, it's a rice plant, look it up, it's a natural gas burning dirtier than all of it, and that's what we're using for, so, when they say it's for clean energy, it's not.
Any additional comments from council? All right, I guess, since I won't be here prior to my twentieth anniversary, this coming next Wednesday, I'd like to wish my wife good luck for dealing with me for the last 20 years, and hopefully she'll deal with me for at least another 20 more, so, that's all I have to say about that. Happy anniversary, babe.
Okay, mayor remarks?
All right, no additional, mayor.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters, speakers have up to three. Speakers have up to three minutes, and we'll start with David Ellis. He'll be followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I do apologize to almost all of you up here, because I'm actually largely addressing this to the mayor, just purely because he had missed my comment at the last meeting, which I feel like that was one of my most important comments I've ever given. I was hit by a car again on Michigan Avenue at the corner of Michigan and Grand just prior to that meeting having happened. I was wearing this exact shirt when it happened. This is the second time I've been hit on Michigan Avenue, and the road, at the crossroad, Grand, during the one-to-two-way conversion project was due, like they had all these plans and stuff for it to have bike lanes added in, which has been shown to reduce all types of accidents, car accidents, pedestrian accidents, and cyclist accidents. It's really interesting how it does that, but the city chose not to put those in because, from what they said on the website, the on-street parking will be maximized, which we now know from the recently completed parking study, we have a 75% excess of city parking in downtown Lansing. So we have decided to not put these safety improvements in and maintain this excess parking. Now, I've been hit by a car because of it. I've heard plenty of, not specifically from you, but I've heard plenty of times from people that this is a policing issue. We just need to have the police do a better job policing. Every single city that has reduced their, like, their pedestrians being hit and killed on the streets, has done it by realizing, no, we can't have the police monitoring every single corner of every single intersection in the entire city. Even after I was hit, I didn't know for 22 days, they didn't file a crash report because they didn't think they had to. I had to do two FOIA requests to get this information that this had happened. Now, let's think about other crashes that have happened recently. Someone I knew was hit and killed over on Cedar Street earlier this year. We had a house hit over on Pennsylvania, a house hit over on Maple. A cyclist was critically injured on Pennsylvania. The city hall was hit by a car. Is everything in the city just doomed to eventually be hit by a car? Is it just like, on an infinite time scale, will everything, will every inch of surface eventually be hit by a car? Is this like the terror we're living in right now? So I see that we have the complete streets grant in here to update our non-motorized plan, which is supposed to be updated every five years and hasn't been updated since 2011. Again, I can't fault you for that one, since you have not been mayor since 2011. I want, I just want to make sure you truly understand that how critical of an issue this is. I just can't keep being hit by cars. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Daniel Arnold.
It's interesting that he mentioned the 75% excess parking lots, because the first thing I wanted to talk about tonight on this section was the fact that the city paid yet another consultant to do yet another study on parking, particularly downtown. And I'll tell you what, I read what the State Journal had to say about it, and if they were at all accurate, it seems to me it was absolutely counterintuitive to what the public and the business have been telling you. The public and the business have been telling you they want to be able to park downtown at meters that they can understand how to operate without having to do an app and put in a credit card, and that they can do that for a reasonable price, and that if they miss it by a minute because the meter maid got there before them, they aren't hit with a higher fee than the $15 they're already hit with, and that you don't force them to have to park in a ramp. This whole study seems to designed, be designed to push people from parking on the street to parking in ramps, advocates increasing the fees for the ramps, for the parking spots, for the fines, and it is just absolutely opposite of what the public and the business people are telling you would be productive. They want to see the ability to do validated parking. They want to see the ability to give their customers tokens. I went downtown Saturday, and I ran into the peanut shop. I was in and out in like 10 minutes. I was not going to park in a ramp to do that. Even if the ramp parking was free, I was not going to park in a ramp to do that. There's a misconception, I think, in this town that the few people who want to walk and bike, and there are people to do, and it's a growing percentage of the population, but I'll tell you what, it is nowhere's near the majority of the population. We are a car-centric town. We've always been car-centric. We will always be car-centric. You need to understand that and start dealing with that, instead of these pie-in-the-sky ideas that you can force people into walking and biking everywhere and parking in ramps. It isn't going to happen. Second, the ovation. You know all the things I've said about this in the past. I saw a story in the State Journal the other day, and apparently it didn't suit Dominic Cochran, because he got it pulled, but it talked about the fact that they were already, before they've even laid a single brick, $8 million over budget. And this is the project that you guys voted to put our full faith and credit of the city behind, knowing that they were going to fund it with grants, with marketing. Marketing means loans. Marketing means us. And PEG grants. How many people still have cable? PEG grants come from cable fees paid to the city by subscribers to cable. Cable is dropping and dropping and dropping. People are going to Netflix, everything else. You cannot expect PEG fees are going to produce what they thought it would.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Arnold, followed by Luna Brown.
Okay, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiley. I did this together, it's by the grace of God, that I have this speech here, because it's at 1% on my phone, and it'll die any second, just here we go. So I'm in downtown Lansing. I was born, and I spend most, and may spend the rest of my life here in downtown Lansing. I'm 44. I utilize Market Meyer daily. Right now, they got a deal, 39 cents a pound for bananas, so I bought a 15-cent banana and a buck of freshly grown peanut butter that I pushed the button on. I'm a speaker on the intersection of faith, mental health, and public safety advocacy, visiting eight government properties a day. I mostly tours, as well as buildings regarding mental health and homelessness. I want you to know about Crossroads Church in Old Town that has community members connect with broken people in a way I couldn't imagine. They built a classroom basketball court, playground, and astounding pavilion called Walnut Park. Everybody off the street shows up here. I could use your donation of items relevant to the homeless, brand-new tents, warmware, two liters of pop, paper plates, cups, utensils, protein bars, snacks, notepads, nice uplifting literature. You guys can roll with me and be a participant. There's a man we memorialize named Mark Bozo. He created a shelter atmosphere that was active 24/7, like a Big Tent Revival. The street loved this man, and he loved the street. Many charitable people sprouted out of his vision. We have nice fancy venues in Lansing and delightful government properties, but the heart of this city is the mercy it shows. Don't mind me that I didn't have time to change out of my street gear to put on a polo. I have lots of shirts, police shirts, but Walnut Park is just amazing. You should come visit it near Crossroads, and just bring your family there by the park or play basketball. Yeah, this city is very compassionate, and I just love anybody around here just to partner with what is going on in terms of helping those in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, and then Nicholas Zandi.
I'd like to first elaborate on the whole bike lane issue. If you don't have a bike lane, that is a safety issue, and people can die. If you don't have street parking, they have to walk an extra 100 feet or so. It seems like a pretty clear decision. As for the main reason I'm talking, I'd like to talk about accessibility in this city. Beyond bike lanes, I want to talk about our sidewalks. We talk about the state of district pair of our roads all the time. Our sidewalks are far worse. I can't walk from my house two blocks away to the QD without having to go off the sidewalk at times, because there's not a clear path on the sidewalk to get there. Like, there is flooding happening, there are spots where sidewalk is missing, and this is right on Kalamazoo, one of the busy streets, you know? Like, there's no reason for it. We put no infrastructure into making our city accessible for people who can't drive, except for CADA. Like, CADA is really the one saving grace of the city. Like, I'm so thankful for Spectran, for my friends. I have used Spectran in the past when I was in an area that wasn't accessible, is accessible for the main bus lines. But like, when you look at, like, say, East Lansing compared to us, all of their crosswalks have auditory signals, so that people who are blind and with visual impairments can know when it's safe to walk. They also have textured strips along the, at the ends of the sidewalk, so people who can't see know when they have reached the corner, so that they know where to cross. You know, like, simple things like this go a long way. And you talk about bringing jobs to the city and bringing people to the city. You have people who have disabled children, you have people who are disabled themselves working in Lansing, but who have to live in Oakhamis or East Lansing, because it's not safe for them to walk around in this city, you know? Like, accessibility is more than just building codes. It is about how we get to and from those buildings, and the city is responsible for that. And like, that's all I'm really going to say, is just like, we need to do something to make our city more walkable, more bikeable, more accessible to everyone. Cars and people who own them shouldn't get priority in everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Michael Mercer.
First off, I want to give Councilmember Brian T. Jackson some credit for the, for voting no on item 12 on the Neogen expansion, considering that the Teamsters have showed evidence that there may have been some shadiness going on with Neogen, as well as them being in contempt of organized labor according to the federal government. I definitely would take his position and vote no as well, because considering the problems that I've been, the accusations I've been hearing, and the fact that Neogen has not showed much evidence as to show that, oh, their employees didn't vote yes on unionizing, that does not scream innocence on their front. And to say this, even though I am not a union member, I do believe in organized labor, and if they voted against joining organized labor like the Teamsters, this makes me wonder if their bosses may have intimidated them into not voting in favor of it, because this sounds like something that a corporate CEO would do. And considering what Starbucks has been doing to prevent their employees from unionizing at times very unsuccessfully, I wouldn't be surprised if Neogen has tried to use the same tactics, but far worse. I also want to mention, since someone mentioned pedestrians, when Neogen expanded into my neighborhood, the old Everett neighborhood, that old building, which I think was originally used by the police, was fenced in, and so because of that, pedestrians cannot access it as a shortcut to get to the library, and they have to go around it, possibly going through a parking lot, meaning it's possible they could get run over by a car. That is just not safe. And to me, that's just, you're decreasing by doing that, you're going to cause more problems with civilian traffic, and also probably road traffic, because they'll have to be responsible for injuring some, injuring or possibly killing someone, because they have to go around the fence, because they can't go through it, because it's fenced in. And also, because it's fenced in, my neighborhood association cannot use it as a possible meeting location. I mean, not to say anything against Mike and Erica Lynn, I'm glad they've accommodated us for our neighborhood meetings, but for Neogen, because they've fenced in their place, I don't think it's at all very possible that we can use their location as a neighborhood meeting, unlike previously, when I think the city had it or something, or the police had it, where it would have been possible for the old Everett Neighborhood Association to host a meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Mercer, and then David Hockenson.
Last night, I ended up staying late, you know, stay up late, of course, after watching our Lions beat those Rams at home. Anyhow, watching the news afterwards, they down in the city of Jackson happened to be in some program, building all these homes down there, and people would prefer living in a home than in an apartment, because it would cost much less to live in a home than, of course, an apartment. You're paying arm and leg living apartments, plus the apartment would not ever belong to you, where the home will when you get it paid off. And I'd like to see the city of Lansing do the same what they, that program, what the city of Jackson is in, build homes up here in the city of Lansing, and you've got plenty of spaces, you know, properties that were homes have been demolished, like the one out there on the corner of Pleasant Grove and Jolly. If you remember, Darnell Oldham, you know, came down and wanted that demolished, and finally you got it demolished and cleaned up, where that can be a peace land, where somebody could, you know, live, if the city gets in that program like Jackson happens to be in. And lots of other homes in the city of Lansing could be demolished that are not able to be fixed, if it's going to cost more than what it would be worth. Anyhow, that, I would prefer seeing homes being built instead of all these darn apartments. You've got apartments all over the darn place. And next, talking about apartments, out there on K North, if you remember Garza, I came down here last year, or maybe earlier this year, and talked about that one on K North that got caught on fire a couple of years ago, and it's still standing, it's not ever been cleaned up, and it needs to be cleaned up. It's an eyesore. Somebody that I work with lives in that subdivision, got to drive by it every damn day, it seems like, and he just wants it cleaned up, and I'm sure everybody else over there does too. And another thing, talk about that apartment, being two years, look at the Anadega Cavern. Wasn't that New Year's Eve when that, down in Anadega, caught on fire? And I just heard on the news a couple of days ago, they cleaned it up. It's, you know, only nine months or eight months. And here, this has been almost 24 months, and you guys haven't done nothing about it yet, and I think it should be getting taken care of, instead of it just being left there as an eyesore.
Thank you. And next. Sorry, next we have David Hockenson.
Good evening. Last time I was here, I was kicked out for using profanity. I'd like you to know in Chapulinski versus New Hampshire, 315 U.S. 586, 1942, the Supreme Court stated unless fighting words are involved, profanity has First Amendment protections. And I have other law about that, but I'm going to skip it, because I want to deal with this gentleman's oath of office. It says, "The oath of office effectively bars all public servants of the ability to usurp authority not specifically delegated to him or her. There is no valid claim of immunity after a violation of the people's rights, for any claim of immunity is a fraud. If valid, it would prevent removal from office for crimes against the people, which removal is authorized, even mandated, under U.S. Constitution, Article II, Section 4, as well as 18 U.S. C 241, 42 U.S. C 1983, 1985, 1986, and the state constitutions." U.S. Constitution, Article 6, you ever read it? "Any oath taker that has knowledge and neglects to prevent another oath taker from breaking his oath is chargeable with an action for neglect to prevent," under Title 42, U.S. C 1986. Furthermore, the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution forbids states from violating the minimum standards of the Constitution and federal law. Have a nice [bleep] day." Ready?
Okay, I do have to make one correction here. On item number 26, I sent it to Ways and Means and Internal Auditor, that grant acceptance for the U.S. Department of Agriculture/Forestry grant, that will go to Cow and placed on file. And seeing no further business, we are adjourned. are adjourned.